We're gonna call this Benton City Council meeting to order on April 22nd, 7:00 PM. This time, ask that everyone stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, please forgive me of my many sins. And as we know, we celebrated yesterday the resurrection of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who voluntarily put himself on the cross to die for our sins, that through him we may be saved. If there's anybody that's not saved, it's my prayer that they do so prior to their drawing their last breath. Be with this council that we may leave our egos out in the parking lot, and that our votes will be for the benefit of the majority of the city of Benton. And dear Lord, please let our votes reflect such. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Cindy, would you take?
Frank Baptist.
Here.
Carrie Murphy.
Here.
Joshua Cash.
Here.
Evelyn Reed.
Here.
Bill Donner.
Here.
Jeff Morrow.
Here.
Judd Hart.
Here.
James Hertzfield.
Steve Lee.
Here.
Jeff Hamm.
Here.
Be non-present.
All right, thank you. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting? Can I say a motion? Motion to accept, minutes. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, this time, Chief is not here, so. I'll ask Judge Arnold to come forward.
Good evening, everyone. My boys get a little weirded up calling in early this year. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for allowing us to be here. The chief and I think it's very important that you guys meet the quality of officer we are hiring and who's going to protect us in the future. So with that, first off, for Mr. Brandon Wallace. Brandon is 31-years-old, he was born in Little Rock, received his degree in 2005. After that, he attended University of Arkansas, Little Rock. He also received his technical fellowship as a nursing assistant. Some of his previous employment included being a jailer at Plaskey County Jail, an
Check. Have to do this all over again? All right. Some of Mike's previous employment, he was a detective with Slayne County Sheriff's Office. He was a task force officer with Attorney General's Office, and he spent numerous years at Plaskey County Sheriff's Office as a detective. Joanna Sanchez, please step forward. Joanna is 32-years-old. She was born in Santa Ana, California, and graduated from Eagle Rock High School in Los Angeles, California, in 2005. She has an associate's degree in criminal justice from Santa Ana College, which she got in 2016. Her previous employment includes Arkansas Department of Corrections, and she was an activity coordinator for the Silverado Senior Living Center in California. She is also a current member of the Army National Guard, and has been since 2017. Joshua Mungl. Joshua is 35-years-old. He was born here in Benton, graduated from Benton High School in 2002. He has an associate's degree in computer drafting and design from ITT Technical School. And he was once a certified podorist and fitness instructor. Some of his previous employment includes the Arkansas Prosthetics, which is here in Benton, and McClure Fitness as a part-time instructor. Last but not least, Michael Chase Collins. I guess Michael's the young one of the group. He's 25-years-old. He was born in Little Rock, Arkansas, and graduated from Bryant High School in 2012. After that, he attended Plaskey Technical College. Some of his previous employment includes being a fireman with the Alexander Police Fire Department, rather, a part-time reserve police officer with Shannon Hills Police Department, and a volunteer fireman with the East End Fire Department. Chase is currently in the Army Reserves, and has been since 2013, where he serves as a combat engineer. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Judge Arnold for their swearing-in, please.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Josh.
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Rice, your duty, and the lady of honor. It's always a privilege and honor for me to be asked to do, so I appreciate the chief and the police department, and I appreciate y'all. If members of your family would come up here and stand with you or lie behind you, I would appreciate it. I know there's some children here, and some family members, and y'all would come out here. Favorite members of the police officers, person responding to the problem, everything that you do, I'd recognize the individual. I usually take this opportunity to, I know you've been through a lot of intellectual testing, physical testing, background checks. One last question, and I usually have, be sure you're top-notch. This time, I'm gonna ask one that's really, really easy. Who by far hands down is the best circuit judge in Arkansas? Somebody said me, but I'm sure. With all seriousness, if you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I expect your name.
Ah, Brandon Wallace.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will uphold the Constitution.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
State of Arkansas.
Of the state of Arkansas.
And I will fully and faithfully.
Fully and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
A police officer for the city of Benton.
A police officer for the city of Benton.
On which I'm about to.
On which I'm about to enter.
Robert Ford, working.
Thank you.
All right, guys, that's it. Thank you.
All right, next, we have our service award presentation. Andrew Chalbuck completed 10 years of service with the Benton Police Department on April the 18th of this year, and was promoted to the rank of Sergeant on April the 19th. Andrew and his wife Carly are the proud parents of Henry, who is almost three-years-old, and Marie, who is almost one-month-old. He likes to fly drones and makes gun holsters. Sergeant Talbert loves being a Benton school resource officer and helped develop the Benton's High School archery program.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Proclamation proclaiming, May 18th, 2019, is Kids to Parks Day in the city of Benton, Arkansas, whereas May the 18th, 2019, is the ninth Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Parks Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit Americans parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of child obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and, hm, I haven't read this yet. Brent Houston, Mr. Houston.
I have no idea. That word has got.
It's got cholesterol in it, hypercholesterolemia. That's how we go. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And now therefore, Mayor Tom Farmer does hereby proclaim, May the 18th, 2019, is Kids to Parks Day.
All right, now we'll go to committee reports and motion, and we'll start with our finance committee, Councilmember Cash.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to request the first reading of ordinance number 20 of 2019.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance 20 of 2019.
Ordinance number 20 of 2019, ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the general funds adopted in ordinance 1 of 2019, authorizing the transfer of funds between departments to clear an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city council adopt the 2019 general fund budget in ordinance 1 of 2019. And whereas the city council needs to amend the 2019 general fund budget to transfer funds from the marketing department to the administrative services department as set forth in exhibit 1 to this ordinance, now forbidden ordained by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, section 1. Pursuant to the authority granted in ACA, section 1458-202 and 1458-203, the city council is hereby amend the fiscal year 2019 city of Benton budget as adopted in ordinance 1 of 2019. The revised expenditures for the operations of the city are attached hereto as exhibit 1 to this ordinance more fully described therein. The adoption of this amendment shall be deemed as appropriation pursuant to the foregoing statutes as well as any other applicable ordinance of the city. Section 2 is hereby found and determined there's immediate need to amend the budget to appropriate funds as set forth herein. Therefore, emergency exists, and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety. It shall be in full force and effect immediately from and after its passage and approval.
Councilmember Cash, anything else?
Yes, to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Please take a vote.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Cash, would you like to make any additional motions?
Yes, ask for a motion for the ordinance number 20 of 2019 to be passed on the second and third readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the ordinance on the second and third reading. Please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 20 of 2019, ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the general funds adopted in ordinance 1 of 2019, authorizing the transfer of funds between departments to clear an emergency and for other purposes.
We have any comments from the public, from the council? Please take a vote.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Councilmember Cash, you have anything else?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass the emergency clause.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to pass the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 20 of 2019 has duly passed. Councilmember Cash, you have anything else?
No, Mayor, that is all.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, I'd like to ask for the first reading of ordinance 22, or 21 of 2019.
Ordinance number 21 of 2019, ordinance annexing certain property into the corporate limits of the city of Benton, Slayne County, Arkansas, declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas Vassar Development Company LLC owns 100% of the certain property within Slayne County, which is contiguous to the Benton City limits, filed a petition with the Slayne County Court requesting that it be allowed to annex into the city. And whereas the county court of Slayne County honor about January the 16th, 2019, in case number CC 2019-2, entered decree authorizing the annexation and releasing the property from the county. And whereas more than 30 days has expired since entry of said decree, and the city of Benton desires to accept said property into the city, now forbidden ordained by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas. Section 1, the property hereafter described is hereby annexed and made part of the city of Benton, Slayne County, Arkansas, and be more fully described as follows to wit. And exhibit A is the legal description that you have. Section 2, said property shall be zoned as R2, single-family detached housing. Section 3, because of the need to accept the property in this annexation, which will be of a benefit to the local economy and the tax base of the city, an emergency is hereby declared, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval. The effective date of the annexation shall be May the 1st, 2019.
Do we have any comments from the public, from the council? Do we have a further motion?
A motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Take a vote.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Ordinance 21 of 2019 has duly passed. Councilmember Reed, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, a motion for the first reading of ordinance 22 of 2019. Second.
We have a motion and a second to first reading ordinance 22 of 2019.
Ordinance number 22 of 2019, ordinance annexing certain property into the corporate limits of the city of Benton, Slayne County, Arkansas, declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas Chapman Havens Development Company LLC owns 100% of certain property within Slayne County, which is contiguous to the Benton City limits, filed a petition with the Slayne County Court requesting that it be allowed to annex into the city. And whereas the Slayne Court of Slayne County honor about January the 16th, 2019, in case number CC 2019-1, entered a decree authorizing the annexation and releasing the property from the county. And whereas more than 30 days has expired since entry of said decree, and the city of Benton desires to accept said property into the city, now forbidden ordained by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, section 1, the property hereafter described is hereby annexed and made a part of the city of Benton, Slayne County, Arkansas, and be more fully described as follows to wit. Exhibit A is your legal description for this ordinance. Section 2, said property shall be zoned as R2, single-family detached housing. Section 3, because of the need to accept the property in this annexation, which will be of a benefit to the local community and the tax base of the city, an emergency is hereby declared, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval. The effective date of the annexation shall be May the 1st, 2019.
Any comments from the public, any comments from the council? Do you have a further motion?
Yes, sir, a motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Please take a vote.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance 23 on the second and third reading by title only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 23 by title reading only.
Ordinance number 22 of 2019, ordinance annexing certain property into the corporate limits of the city of Benton, Slayne County, Arkansas, declaring emergency and for other purposes. Any comments from the public, from the council?
Councilmember Reed, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, a motion to have the first reading of ordinance 23 of 2019. Second.
We have a motion and a second to first reading ordinance 23 of 2019. Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt by title reading only.
Ordinance number 22 of 2019, ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the general funds adopted in ordinance 1 of 2019, authorizing the transfer of funds between departments to clear an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the county court of Slayne County honor about January the 16th, 2019, in case number CC 2019-1, entered a decree authorizing the annexation and releasing the property from the county. And whereas more than 30 days has expired since entry of said decree, and the city of Benton desires to accept said property into the city, now forbidden ordained by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, section 1, the property hereafter described is hereby annexed and made a part of the city of Benton, Slayne County, Arkansas, and be more fully described as follows to wit. Exhibit A is your legal description for this ordinance. Section 2, said property shall be zoned as R2, single-family detached housing. Section 3, because of the need to accept the property in this annexation, which will be of a benefit to the local community and the tax base of the city, an emergency is hereby declared, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Any comments from the public, any comments from the council? Do you have a further motion?
Yes, sir, a motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Please take a vote.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to pass the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 22 of 2019 has duly passed. Councilmember Reed, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir, a motion to have the first reading of ordinance 23 of 2019. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading ordinance 23 of 2019.
Ordinance number 23 of 2019, ordinance rezoning certain land in the city of Benton, Slayne County, Arkansas, declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas an application for rezoning was filed with the planning commission of the city of Benton, Arkansas, by Barbara K. Burton Woski Richardson and Beverly Jean Burton Griffin requesting the land hereafter described is zoned from R5 to TC1. And whereas the planning commission ordered a public hearing to be held on April the 9th, 2019, at 6:00 PM, for the purpose of hearing said application, the notice that hearing having been published in a newspaper having a bona fide circulation in Slayne County, Arkansas, with evidence having been submitted that all property owners or leases within 300 feet of the property having been notified of said hearing, and at said hearing, the planning commission recommended to the city council that such request be granted. And whereas the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, desires to rezone the following property from C3 to heavy industrial. Now, forbidden ordained by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, section 1, the following described property is hereby rezoned from C3 to heavy industrial. And you'll see a legal description attached to exhibit A. Section 2, the city council having found that the immediate rezoning of this property will allow construction to commence thereon, which will be of benefit to the local economy hereby declares an emergency, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect after its passage and approval.
All right, do we have any public, any comments from the public? Yes, sir? Come on out.
This is a spot done by Sunset Lake, right?
Yes.
Please tell us your name when you get up here.
Josh Briggs, and I think I've dealt with everybody up here at one point or another. I'm the editor of the Courier. This has nothing to do with my professional career. This is strictly as a resident. I know I probably don't look like it, but I'm training for half marathons, and I've already run two. I run around this area very close to what y'all are considering here, and I know it passed 5-0 in the planning and zoning. But my concern is, not only myself, but tons of other residents to this city use this area. And I think it's not a good idea for that section of town, one, whenever you're driving by it on interstate, it's an eyesore. There's a reason that these things are put off the road where you can't see them, Ryanco, Alcoa, Reynolds, whenever it was there. And I think the environment as a whole will suffer from it, being so close to Sunset Lake, with all the wildlife there. I think the runoff could potentially be hazardous to the area, and I know all that'll be taken into effect, taken into consideration whenever, before they start building. My other concern is, this is a temporary, from what I've gathered reading it, so I think in the long run, you might run into more problems with, whenever they're gone, after the interstate's done and all that, somebody else wanting to use the same type thing that close to areas that we're discussing. I think it's a bad idea. Like I said again, I have a reporter here. I will not be quoted in the newspaper. I'm unbiased on the situation as far as a professional. I'm coming to you as a citizen that uses the area and the parks. Now, therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, section one, the following described property is hereby rezoned from R five to T C one. And you'll see a legal description as exhibit A, section two. The city council having found that the immediate rezoning of this property will allow construction commenced thereon will be of a benefit to the local economy hereby declares an emergency and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect after its passage of approval.
Any comments from the public? From the council?
Motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading. Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, please take a vote.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield? Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three on the second and third reading by title only. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance twenty-three by title reading only.
Ordinance number twenty-three of two thousand nineteen, ordinance rezoning certain land in the city of Benton, Saline County, Arkansas, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Any comments from the public? From the council? Please take a vote.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield? Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield? Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
All right, anything else?
Yes, sir, at this time make a motion for the first reading of ordinance twenty-four of two thousand nineteen.
We have a second. Second. Any comments?
Ordinance number twenty-four, two thousand nineteen, ordinance rezoning certain land in the city of Benton, Saline County, Arkansas, declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas an application was for an, whereas an application for rezoning was filed with the planning commission of the city of Benton, Arkansas by Tom Watson requesting the land here and after described as zoned from C three to heavy industrial. And whereas the planning commission ordered a public hearing to be held on April the ninth, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. for the purpose of hearing said application, the notice such hearing having been published in a newspaper having a bona fide circulation in Saline County, Arkansas, with evidence having been submitted that all property owners or leases within three hundred feet of the property haven't been notified of said hearing. At said hearing, the planning commission recommended to the city council that such request be granted. And whereas the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas desires to rezone the following property from C three to heavy industrial. Now, therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, section one, the following described property is hereby rezoned from C three to heavy industrial. And you'll see a legal description attached to this exhibit A. Section two, the city council having found that the immediate rezoning of this property will allow construction to commence thereon which will be of benefit to the local economy hereby declares an emergency and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect after its passage of approval.
All right, do we have any public, any comments from the public? Yes, sir? Come on out.
This is a spot done by Sunset Lake, right?
Yes.
Please tell us your name when you get up here.
Josh Briggs, and I think I've dealt with everybody up here at one point or another. I'm the editor of the Courier, this has nothing to do with my professional career, this is strictly as a resident. I know I probably don't look like it, but I'm training for half marathons and have already run two. I run around this area very close to what y'all are considering here, and I know it passed five-oh in the, in the planning and zoning. But my concern is, not only myself, but tons of other residents to this city use this area. And I think it's not a, not a good idea for that section of town, one, whenever you're driving by it on interstate, it's an eyesore. There's a reason that these things are put off the road where you can't see them, Ryan Co., Alcoa, Reynolds, whenever it was there. And I think the environment as a whole will, will suffer from it being so close to Sunset Lake with all the wildlife there. I think the runoff could potentially be hazardous to the area, and I know all that'll be taken into effect, taken into consideration whenever, before they start building. My other concern is, this is a temporary, from, from what I've gathered reading it. So I think in the long run, you may run into more problems with, whenever they're gone, after the interstate's done and all that, somebody else wanting to use the same type thing that close to areas that we're discussing. I think it's a bad idea. Like I said again, I have a reporter here, I will not be quoted in the newspaper, I'm unbiased on the situation as far as a professional. I'm coming to you as a citizen that uses the area and the parks. And I know there's other people that aren't here to talk about it, but I speak for them too, that I don't think it's a good idea being that close to Sunset Lake. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just want to echo what Josh said. Parks director for the city of Benton, I think it will have a negative impact on our trails. People like Josh using the park, Sunset Lake specifically, wildlife and vegetation out there. So I want you to consider that one voting on this.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
I'm Tony Floyd over the street drainage department. I have concerns of the runoff off of this property going direct, straight into Sunset Lake, there's no buffer.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Well, my name's Stephen Hall, I'm with the Southland Holdings Corporation. The people that are going to be putting the temporary plant up there. We must meet federal guidelines for all stormwater pollution and Arkansas Department of Transportation, federal, their laws for any kind of runoff on the property. They're steps way beyond any, any imaginable erosion control, silt fence, biologs, berms. We have to have concrete holding cells for any kind of runoff while washing out concrete trucks. This is a brand-new concrete plant coming on. It has federal guidelines for the emission controls, dust control, you know, any kind of emissions that come out of the plant. I can't, I can't say, I guarantee that there will not be any runoff off there because, you know, extreme conditions do exist. But we have to go through all the guidelines through federal and Arkansas state conservation laws.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Any comments from the council?
Yes, mayor. I think that, that area, as I said earlier, especially coming off of exit one sixteen, that it would be an eyesore coming into the city of Benton with that type of commercial work that is being done there for a concrete company. So I too agree with the patrons that have spoken.
Yes, mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I'd have to go with Sunset Lake and Dog Park and all that area down there that the city of Benton spent thousands of dollars developing and all that area. And I'm going to keep the proceedings as best I can, so I'll vote against this ordinance.
All right, thank you, anyone else?
Never mind.
Yes, sir.
Being it's, you know, for the state, there's, there's two other excellent spots that's outside the city. Where Stuckey's used to be. They got a rest area that's not being used. So it's not like they don't, there's not another place to do this. And my concern, more or less, would be at the end, who, who's cleaning up the mess at the end? I mean, they're, you know, it just, there's, I think there's other better alternatives than that specific spot, personally.
Anyone else responsible, Freddie?
Any runoff and cleanup also. The property will be left, be left in the condition it is now or better. It's a great, it's a great spot for us. And you're right, there are alternative areas that are not as convenient. But during this project, we'll be employing about two to five hundred people at different times of the project. And that's just a great place for us to use an easy access to give a good product to Arkansas Department of Transportation. Anything further out, kind of runs into quality control issues. But our environmental, our environmental group and along with the federal government are not. A lot of restrictions we have to comply with for safe groundwater, return to that property back to its original condition.
All right, thank you. Our council member Reed, you have anything?
Uh, I guess that's the motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
No, she didn't read the first one.
Oh, she did read it.
Yeah.
I've read it.
We have a vote.
Not after, not after the first reading.
We have a vote with Judd. Please take a vote.
I would, I'm sorry, I didn't get a second for this, to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second. Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield? Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
No.
Carrie Murphy?
No.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
No.
We had one, two, three, four, five, six. There were six, yes. Three no and one absence, so it does not pass. To suspend the rules, I mean, it doesn't have to-
The motion to suspend the rules does not pass, and it means it will come back next month.
Correct.
All right, move on to the next thing, councilmember Reed.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance thirty-six of two thousand nineteen.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution thirty-six of two thousand nineteen. Please read the resolution.
Resolution thirty-six of two thousand nineteen, a resolution authorizing city attorney to file lawsuits in Saline County Circuit Court seeking to abate public nuisances located at four properties inside the Benton city limits and for other purposes. Whereas the city council of the city of Benton have been presented with photographs of the conditions of each of the properties listed below which are attached as exhibit one to this ordinance. And whereas the city council finds the conditions, these properties are unsightly and pose a significant risk to the public health, safety and welfare, and in particular to the neighbors who live in the vicinity of each such property. And whereas city council finds and declares that these properties are a nuisance to the public which should be abated. And whereas been determined the best course of action for the city is to direct the city attorney to file suit against each property owner, owners and anyone who maintains an interest in the property and ask the Saline County Circuit Court to also find that the property conditions constitute a public nuisance which should be abated. And therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, at section one. For the reasons stated above, the city attorney is hereby authorized to bring a cause of action, Saline County Circuit Court seeking a court order to abate public nuisances located at the following addresses in Benton. Five eleven Rivas Street, Adrian Vargas, and you'll see a parcel number there. Three oh five Gale Cove, George Golliver, and with, along with his parcel number. Two eleven Bass Lane, Patricia Garrett Squires with the parcel number. Fourteen fifteen Longview, Frank DeFet, senior and junior.
Comments from the public? From the council?
One thing, Mr. Mayor, I'm working with Mr. DeFet on fourteen fifteen Longview, I met with him last week, and we're getting a list together of things that, that the city would like to occur on that property. And so we, I'm not asking you to not include this one, but I just want to, in fairness to him, to state that.
Thank you. Please take a vote.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield? Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Resolution number thirty-six of two thousand nineteen is duly passed.
Mr. Mayor, resolution thirty-seven, I'm going to recuse myself from that since I work for the agency that this is pertaining to. And Alderman, councilmember Lee has offered to present.
Councilmember Lee?
Mr. Mayor, I make, I make a motion that we pass resolution number thirty-seven of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass resolution number thirty-seven of two thousand nineteen. Please read the resolution.
Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand nineteen, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into an addendum to the contract with the Central Arkansas Development Council for space for the distribution of commodities and for other purposes. Whereas the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas and the Central Arkansas Development Council entered into a program agreement providing services to the senior adults in Benton for the physical years two thousand seventeen through two thousand nineteen. And whereas it has been determined that this agreement needs to be amended to allow the distribution of commodities at the senior adult center located in Riverside Park. Now, therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, that's section one. The mayor and city clerk hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city of Benton the addendum to the program agreement with the Central Arkansas Development Council. This contract addendum is attached hereto as exhibit one is incorporated now by reference as if stated word for word.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned in the, as I mentioned in the agenda meeting, I represent C A D C on a pro bono basis, I've done so for the last twelve, thirteen years. The original contract waives any conflict of interest between me and the city and me and, and C A D C, and they did likewise as well. I just wanted to point that out again for the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Please take a vote.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield? Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Resolution number thirty-seven of two thousand nineteen is duly passed.
Make a motion for the first reading of ordinance twenty-five of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance twenty-five of two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance number twenty-five of two thousand nineteen, ordinance to establish and lay off Benton Municipal Property Owners Multipurpose Improvement District number one sixteen, one hundred and sixteen, Salt Creek subdivision prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. Whereas petition to form Benton Municipal Property Owners Multipurpose Improvement District number one one six, Salt Creek subdivision has been filed with the Benton city clerk. And whereas the city clerk has presented the petition to the mayor, and whereas the mayor has set April the twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, at seven P M. as the date and time for a hearing before the Benton city council for consideration of the petition. And whereas the city coun, Benton city council has determined from an abstract certificate of property ownership that those signing the petition constitute all the owners of the real property to be located in said district. And whereas the Arkansas Municipal Property Owners Improvement District law provides that if the governing body determines that all the owners of the real property to be located in the district have petitioned for the formation of the district, it shall then be its duty by ordinance to establish and lay off the district as defined in the petition and to appoint the commissioner's name to the petition. And therefore be ordained by the city council of Benton, uh, city council of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, that the real property described in exhibit A attached hereto and made a part hereof is hereby established and laid off as Benton Municipal Property Owners Multipurpose Improvement District number one one six, Salt Creek subdivision, for the purpose of constructing and installing facilities for waterworks, recreation, drainage, gas pipelines, underground trenches and excavations necessary for the installation of electric and telephone distribution systems, sanitary sewers, streets, including curbs and gutters, sidewalks, together with facilities related to any of the foregoing within said district. Section two, the following three individuals are hereby appointed as commissioners of said improvement district. Gary Kennedy, Lindsey Ann Kennedy and Gary Kennedy senior. Section three, the name of the improvement district shall be Benton Municipal Property Owners Multipurpose Improvement District number one one six, Salt Creek subdivision. Section four, all improvements to be undertaken and accomplished by the improvement district as set forth in section one shall meet all rules and regulations of the Benton Planning Commission, Benton Street Department and Benton Public Utility Commission as applicable. The improvements undertaken shall not be accepted by the city of Benton unless such rules and regulations are followed to the satisfaction of Benton Planning Commission, the Benton Street Department and the Benton Public Utility Commission as applicable. Section five, by establishing the Benton Municipal Property Owners Multipurpose Improvement District number one one six, Salt Creek subdivision, the city of Benton assumes no liability or responsibilities for any obligations of the district.
Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules for a second, third reading.
James Hertzfield? Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five on the second and third reading by title only. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number twenty-five of two thousand nineteen by reading the title only.
Ordinance number twenty-five of two thousand nineteen, ordinance to establish and lay off Benton Municipal Property Owners Multipurpose Improvement District number one one six, Salt Creek subdivision prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from the council? Please take a vote.
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield?
There is no emergency clause.
Second.
Another one, there wasn't one.
Councilmember Reed, is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
Is that all? Councilmember Hamm, do you have anything?
Yes, mayor, I would like to have the first reading of ordinance number twenty-six of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance number twenty-six of two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance number twenty-six of two thousand nineteen, ordinance increasing certain fees to be charged by the city of Benton to fund stormwater control amending to ordinance sixty-four, two thousand and six, and ordinance seventy-six of two thousand and nine, declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Benton presently charges fees for funding the regulation and control of stormwater within the city. And whereas after consideration, the city council of the city of Benton has determined that it is necessary to increase the monthly fees in order to continue the regulation and control of stormwater, and the rates charged herein are reasonable and necessary, now therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Benton, Arkansas, section one. Ordinance sixty-four of two thousand and six established a certain fee that the city should charge on each customer's monthly utility statement for the regulation and control of stormwater. The amount of the monthly charge was amended in ordinance seventy-six of two thousand and nine to one dollar and fifty cents per invoice for commercial utility users and fifty cents per month for residential utility users. Ordinance fifty-nine of two thousand and eleven amended ordinance sixty-four, two thousand and six, and created a restricted fund for the stormwater fees collected therein. Section two, the amounts provided for in ordinance seventy-six of two thousand and nine is originally levied by ordinance sixty-four, two thousand and six, or hereby amended to ten dollars, no cents for commercial utility users and five dollars, no cents for the residential utility users. This rate shall become effective at the end of the next billing cycle following the effective date of this ordinance and shall be a per meter charge levied on monthly sewer bills by the utility department. Section three, all revenues generated by this ordinance alone, as originally levied in ordinance sixty-four, two thousand and six, shall be held in a separate fund within the general fund and which shall be known as the Restricted Stormwater Fund. These revenues shall be used for the following purposes only. A, any drainage project approved by the city council. Section four, all ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of the conflict but not otherwise. All other stormwater fees charged by the city shall not be affected by this ordinance. Section five, the city council hereby determines that the immediate collection of additional stormwater fees is necessary to assist in the regulation and control of the stormwater within the city, therefore is found that this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, public health, sa, uh, public health, safety and welfare and emergencies hereby declared. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage of approval.
Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Make, make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion and a se, and a second to suspend the rules.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
No.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
No.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield? Steve Lee?
Yes.
There were, one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, seven yes and two no and an absence, so three.
Rules are suspended. Councilmember Hamm, would you like to make another motion?
Yes, mayor, for ordinance twenty-six of two thousand nineteen, you passed on the second, third readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance number twenty-six of two thousand nineteen on the second, third reading.
Ordinance number twenty-six of two thousand nineteen, ordinance increasing certain fees to be charged by the city of Benton to fund, fund stormwater control amending to ordinance sixty-four, two thousand and six, and ordinance seventy-six of two thousand and nine, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
All right, any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Please take a vote.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Yes.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
No.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield? Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to pass the emergency clause, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Carrie Murphy?
No.
Joshua Cash?
Yes.
Evelyn Reed?
Yes.
Bill Donner?
Yes.
Jeff Morrow?
No.
Judd Hart?
Yes.
James Hertzfield? Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
Yes.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
That was three, that was two no's and one absence, so three no's, so it was seven three.
Seven. Seven yes. Seven, seven yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-six of two thousand and nineteen, it will pass. Anything else, Councilmember Ham? All right, Councilmember Donner, do you have a report on health and safety?
Nothing in your report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Parks Committee, Councilmember Hart, do you have anything for us?
Yes, sir, I do, I'd like a motion to pass, or for the first reading of ordinance twenty-seven of two thousand and nineteen, please.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance twenty-seven of two thousand and nineteen.
Ordinance number twenty-seven of two thousand and nineteen, ordinance amending the two thousand and nineteen budget for the Parks Fund As adopted in ordinance one of two thousand and nineteen, authorizing certain equipment purchases at Ralph Munch Park declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city council adopted the two thousand and nineteen Parks Fund budget in ordinance one of two thousand and nineteen And whereas the city council needs to amend the two thousand and nineteen Parks Fund budget to appropriate funds for certain equipment purchases Which are needed at Ralph Munch Park is set forth in exhibit one to this ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, pursuant to the authority granted in ACA, section fourteen fifty-eight, two oh two, and fourteen fifty-eight, two oh three. The city council does hereby amend the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen city of Benton budget as adopted in ordinance one of two thousand and nineteen. The revised expenditures for the operation of the city are attached hereto as exhibit one to this order And are fully described therein, the adoption of this amendment shall be deemed as appropriation pursuant to foregoing statutes As well as any of the other ordinance of the city. Section two, is hereby found and determined there is immediate need to amend the budget to appropriate funds is set forth herein Therefore emergency exists and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. It shall be in full force and effect, it be from and after its passage and approval.
Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, please take a vote.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
And James Hurstfield. Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Motion to adopt on second and third reading by title only.
We have a motion and a second to adopt on second, third reading by title only. Please read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number twenty-seven of two thousand and nineteen, ordinance amending the two thousand and nineteen budget for the Parks Fund As adopted in ordinance one of two thousand and nineteen, authorizing certain equipment purchases at Ralph Munch Park declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Any comments from the public? From the council? Take a vote.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfield. Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfield. Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number twenty-seven of two thousand and nineteen, it will pass, anything else?
Yes, sir, a motion to pass resolution thirty-eight of two thousand and nineteen, please.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass resolution number thirty-eight of two thousand and nineteen, please read the resolution.
Resolution thirty-eight of two thousand and nineteen, resolution authorizes the city enter into an amended contract with McClellan Consulting Engineers, Inc. For providing engineering services for certain repairs of the Sunset Lake Trail and for other purposes. Whereas the city wishes to enter into a contract amendment with McClellan Consulting Engineers Providing engineering services related to repairs of the Sunset Lake Trail. And whereas a copy of the work order is attached hereto as exhibit one now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, the mayor and city clerk hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city of Benton amended contract work order With McClellan Consulting Engineers as set forth in exhibit one.
Comments from the public? From the council? Please take a vote.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfield. Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Resolution number thirty-eight of two thousand and nineteen, indeed we pass, anything else, Councilmember Hart?
Yes, a motion for the first reading of ordinance twenty-eight of two thousand and nineteen, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance number twenty-eight of two thousand and nineteen.
Ordinance number twenty-eight of two thousand and nineteen, ordinance stating there's two thousand and nineteen programming rates For the Parks and Recreation Department declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city council has determined it is best interest of the city To set certain programming rates for the city of Benton Parks facilities and programs Which will help fund the operations of the Parks and Recreation Department. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Benton, Arkansas, that's section one. The city council does hereby adopt the programming rates attached hereto collectively as exhibit one to this ordinance. The fees collected from these rates shall be used by the Parks and Recreation Department to fund its operations and expenses. Section two, the rates established herein shall remain in effect until such time as the city council modifies them by ordinance. Section three, because of the need to set programming rates for the city of Benton Parks and Recreation Department, emergency hereby declared. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Any comments from the public? From the council?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, please take a vote.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfield. Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Councilmember Hart, do you have anything else?
I do, motion to adopt on the second and third reading.
Second.
By title only.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the reading of title only.
Ordinance number twenty-eight of two thousand and nineteen, ordinance setting the two thousand and nineteen programming rates For the Parks and Recreation Department declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Any discussion from the public? From the council? Please take a vote.
James Hurstfield. Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
Anything?
Motion to adopt the emergency clause, Mayor.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause, please take a vote.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfield.
Ordinance number twenty-eight of two thousand and nineteen, indeed we pass, anything else?
One more, Mayor, like a motion for the first reading of ordinance twenty-nine of two thousand and nineteen, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance twenty-nine of two thousand and nineteen.
Order number twenty-nine of two thousand and nineteen, ordinance setting the two thousand and nineteen rental rules and rates For the Gene Moss Activity Center declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city council has determined it is best interest of the city to set certain rates, rules and rates For the rental of the Gene Moss Activity Center which will help fund the operations of the Parks and Recreation Department. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Benton, Arkansas, that's section one. The city council does hereby adopt the rental rules and rates which are attached hereto as exhibit one to this ordinance. The fees collected from these rates shall be used by the Parks and Recreation Department to fund its operations and expenses. Section two, the rates established herein shall remain in effect until such time as the city council modifies them by ordinance. Section three, because of the need to set rules and rental rates for the Gene Moss Activity Center Emergency hereby declared, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Any comments from the public? From the council?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, please take a vote.
Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfield. Steve Lee.
Yes.
Anything else?
A motion to adopt on second and third reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt by title only on the second, third reading.
Ordinance number twenty-nine of two thousand and nineteen, ordinance setting the two thousand and nineteen rental rules and rates For the Gene Moss Activity Center declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Any comments from the public? From the council? Please take a vote.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfield. Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Anything else?
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause, please take a vote.
Carrie Murphy.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hurstfield. Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Ham.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number twenty-nine of two thousand and nineteen, indeed we pass. All right, anything else, Councilmember Hart?
No, Mayor.
All right, what about the A and P Commission, the report for them, Councilmember Murphy or Baptist?
Didn't get the minutes, but I can give you a brief synopsis that the A and P Commission did approve The city developing a welcome to Benton city with this panther on it, it's going to be on the white wall That's right there where it says the paintball, courtesy of the mayor working with that and Tina and them to get that done. But the A and P Commission did approve that plus a couple of other funding projects that they did for the, this month. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question for Brent, is there any way that we can bring back ordinance twenty-four? Because that vote, it did not help the citizens of Benton any nor anyone that travels the interstate. All it done was postpone the finishing that job by at least a month. And is there a parliamentary procedure for anybody that voted negative on something to be able to change their vote?
You know, I don't have a crystal ball to know how the council's going to vote. I know it is going to look awful strange if you pull it back up now After the people who are making the request have left the room. And if you voted it down, I think that there would be more questions And whether or not that that could expose us to some kind of suit or not Without giving them the ability to come in and say more. I just am hesitant, and I understand exactly what you're saying Because either we needed to tell them yes or we needed to tell them no, but right now we've told them next month.
Don't know yet.
Don't know.
Mr. Houston, but isn't it their responsibility to be here for the entire length of the committee? And even though the fact that someone got up and left, that's their responsibility, not anyone else's?
I mean, in fairness, fairness to them, they thought that the issue was over with and done when they got up and left. But it's your vote, it's not mine, but what you'd have to do is on the agenda.
Realistically, as a businessman, he wants to put something somewhere. Undoubtedly, the state's hired him to do it. Where to do it, putting him off at least a month, to me is counterproductive For getting that job finished and do we want the citizens to put up with that congestion for another month? And that's what the vote did. And I, well, I better not say that. But it just, I don't know, is there, is there a way? Is make a motion and see how it plays out to bring it back?
I can't tell you to not make a motion on anything, council member, I mean, I can't. But I think if you wanted to do that, you could make a motion to, for reconsideration of it and see if, and reopen debate.
I make a motion to bring back ordinance twenty-four to let's get this one yea or nay finalized tonight Where at least they will know something and not postpone that job for a month. I don't see no harm in that, I think that would be helping in lieu of hindering like the vote You know, played out, but I'll make that a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
That's what you have.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to reconsider ordinance number twenty-four of two thousand and nineteen.
No, I just need to take a vote. Okay. Joshua Cash.
Of course, is it too late? I'm just trying to further understand, I'm a little bit confused on what we're doing, if you could say that.
Councilmember Lee has made a motion requesting that the city council reopen the debate on ordinance twenty-four And I presume if it passes, that there will be a motion to suspend the rules And address that motion at that point in time, that's what he is asking to do.
The intent is to take care of it tonight, yea or nay? To where they can either start building that plant right there or going somewhere else? Not postponing the finishing of widening the interstate.
And I think I was confused initially because I even spoke during the discussion period of anybody with any comments. And I said then at that time that I did not agree, in essence, with them doing the project. But I think when it went around and asked, I voted yes, because I think I thought I was on a different motion, if I'm...
I feel like there was probably some confusion on that side.
Yeah, I was confused.
In the vote of the suspending the rules.
Yeah.
That's my personal opinion, I may be way out in left field, but...
I thought that that time a vote was going to come up, and it did, but I'm not clear on what I was voting at the time. So, there was confusion on my part.
All right, we do have a motion and a second to reconsider ordinance twenty-four of two thousand and nineteen.
One question, this is for Mr. Houston, do we have to, before we can take this vote on reconsideration of ordinance twenty-four, Shouldn't we vote on adjusting the agenda, revise the agenda to add this back? That's what this vote is.
I think that's what you're doing.
Okay.
Here with that, with that motion.
Joshua Cash.
Motion and a second to basically adjust the agenda and reconsider ordinance twenty-four of two thousand and nineteen.
Do you want to do that or not?
No.
Evelyn Reed.
I don't know if I want to do it or not, I'm serious, I know I should have voted yes to suspend the rules But I'm just worried how it's going to look if we go back and undo this, it's still waiting those three or four weeks. So, but, yes, yes.
Steve, I understand that, I'm with you, a hundred and ten percent, I wish we'd got it done tonight, but like the attorney said...
Well, you can put people out for another month.
for another month.
Well, I, I agree with you, a hundred percent, but like the attorney said, I think it would look bad if someone voted no.
Jeff Morrow?
Yes.
Judd Hart?
No.
James Hurstfield?
Steve Lee?
Yes.
Jeff Hamm?
No.
Frank Baptist?
Yes.
Carrie Murphy?
Well, I screwed up. I did, because I was voting no down the project, so my vote's not gonna change, so I'm gonna vote yes so I can vote no later.
We should've done that thirty minutes ago.
'Cause I wouldn't have voted the second the motion to bring it up, I thought it was gonna die.
I did too.
I was, I'm a voting, I'll vote yes to bring it back forward.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Yes, sir.
Oh gee, it's up to the mayor on what he wants to do.
I think it's the first time I've ever seen the mayor have to vote for twelve years.
My lucky...
Leave it to you.
If I'm the citizens, I'd be upset.
But they might move on.
Well...
And they, since we've been there so long...
Look, I, I don't think that they're, they're not, they're not waiting to make the road based on that plant right now. It's not gonna set them back thirty days. They haven't even started, that's, they're just looking for a site, so they could immediately